We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. It is 7:02. And I have an announcement to make prior to us getting started. James Smalling and Brian Smalling had asked me, he was going to tell everyone that how much that he appreciated what the city had done with the passing of his mother. And he had meant to get a card, but Mr. Smalling is in the hospital. So he's wanted me to be sure and convey that and ask that we remember him and the entire family in continued prayer. And Pastor, we'll turn it over to you for devotion.
Praying, man.
It's a great, it's a great honor to be with all of you tonight. It's a great opportunity just to do life with you guys here in our community. And tonight, I just wanted to share just a favorite, one of my favorite life verses to live by as a leader. It helps keep me focused and really thankful, humble for the opportunity God has given me to be a leader in our community as a pastor, leader in my home, leader just again as a Christ follower. And so in Mark, Chapter 10, verse 45, Jesus says, "For even the son of man came not to be served, but to serve others and to give his life as a ransom for me." So this is a very key verse. It sort of sums up Jesus's life. Here's who he is, and this is what he's come to do. His whole mission and ministry was about others. It was about people. He was very, very focused on them. So if you look through the Gospels, particularly again in Mark, Chapter 5, you'll see Jesus is traveling. It's spreading his message, his miracles, it's spreading. People are coming, they're wanting to hear him, they want to be exposed to his teaching, his love, to see who he is. And as he gets out of the boat and he gets to the other side, a huge crowd collapses around him in Mark 5. Jerius, who was one of the local synagogue leaders there, who had a very prominent position, very influential man, very important man. The apostles could have looked at this and said, hey, this is a great opportunity, Jesus. We know that you and the religious leaders will always see eye to eye. You know, they're always trying to trap Jesus, we know that, we read the Gospels. And so Jerius is in dire need. His daughter is dying. He says, will you please come to my house, lay hands on her so that she might live? So Jesus says, sure. Jesus travels with Jerius. He's going through the community, he's going to his home. And as he's doing it, again, I want you to remember Mark 10:45, we're sort of exposed to the heart of Jesus. This is who he was. He was always present with the person he was with in that moment, always. Yes, he had a mission. Yes, he was fulfilling the ministry that was given to him. But the cool thing about the story is that there was a woman, we know, that had the issue of blood. She suffered for 12 years. No cure, no hope, hadn't gotten better, got worse. She heard about Jesus coming through her town. She takes this giant leap of faith because of her condition, she was considered unclean. If you were considered unclean, you didn't do life with everybody else. You sort of stayed yourself. But she took a big risk to get to where Jesus was. And I love that it says that, "For she thought to herself, if I could just touch his robe, I will be healed." Immediately the bleeding stopped, and she could feel in her body that she'd been healed of this terrible condition. Now, what I love about this story is that Jesus in this moment was present with who he was with. Jesus wasn't influenced by the status that Jairus had. And Jesus wasn't influenced by the status that the woman lacked. He had two people on polar opposites of the spectrum, polar opposites. The rest of the story, we know, it concludes that Jesus says, hey, I know that somebody touched me. The apostle said, of course, everybody's touched you. Everybody's trying to get in some time with you. There's hundreds of people here, possibly thousands, who knows? And Jesus knows somebody touched me. And Jesus turns to the woman. He knows exactly who he is. And she just has this moment with her Savior. And I love what he called her. He didn't call her an outcast. He didn't call her, hey, you who are unclean. He calls her daughter, which is a very significant point in the story. And so for us as leaders in this room, and we're all leaders, especially those of us who are Christ followers, listen, we're all leaders. We all have opportunities to allow people right where they are in that moment. Remember that Christ said he didn't come to be served, he came to serve. And this is our heart as leaders. This is what keeps us focused. If there's one thing I teach to people that I get to do life with, is that when you're in a conversation with somebody, one-on-one, I know life is hectic around us. We have responsibilities, agendas, and all those things to take care of. But if somebody's in conversation with you, focus on the one. See the one in front of you. This is what Jesus did. He always focused on the one. And so that's my heart for us as a community, as leaders, and as our churches. And I would love to pray over you right now. Father, thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to do life with the folks here in my community, the community I love, and the room of people I love. And Father, I pray for our leaders. God, I know they have an amazing responsibility. God, as they lead our community, as they serve our community, and I pray over them through Jesus. And Lord, I pray that they will see the person that you place in front of them every day, God, that we just stop. God, that we will just see that person for who they are. God, may be highly needed, be encouraged, uplifted, reminded of who they are in you, Christ. Father, may we all do that, dear Jesus, no matter where we live, no matter where we reside, no matter what our occupation, or where our traveling day may take us. May we see people the way that you see people, Jesus. Father, we love you. We pray for the Smalling family. We pray you would touch and heal their father and bring comfort and peace to that family. Father, we just love you. We thank you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If everyone will place their hand for a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the official roll call.
Meredith, where's the recorder? Did you make the recorder? Oh, okay.
David Lee.
Here.
Chandler Wolferson.
Here.
Tony Binnell.
Here.
Doug Brown.
Here.
Freddie Carter.
Here.
Jerry Kirkman.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, and we have a forum established, and we will continue with the meeting. The next item is to adopt the agenda, and we have a couple of things to add and possibly rearrange. Aaron's running just a little bit late, so he asked that his items be adjusted appropriately. We have the addition to discuss a three-quarter ton truck and the half-ton truck. And under the job description, for codes, to advertise that also and to hire, or to work on the job description and to advertise the position.
It'd be a one-ton. Thanks for your setup.
Actually, he told me both of them. Three-quarter and one-ton. He was going to present both, so.
Thank you.
So is there anything else that we need to add or change?
Just so Meredith knows, you said a half-ton and three-quarter.
Oh, three-quarter ton and one-ton. Excuse me.
I move we adopt the agenda with those two items. If the mayor's mentioned, add that to the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Binnell and a second by Councilman Leaf to accept the agenda with those changes. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is public comments. Is there anyone who wants to comment on anything on the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none, we'll proceed. First item is the minutes from the July 18, 2019 meeting. And before a motion is made, I do see one correction that needs to be made under the Code building. It has the address as 1011 Park Street, and that is 1013 Park Street.
And also right up above it, under remodel community room, there wasn't any clarification on how the vote, yeah.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the minutes from the July 18, 2019 meeting with those two aforementioned comments that need to be revised.
I have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Wilson, to accept it with those corrections. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next item is the minutes from the July 26, 2019 special call meeting, which was basically just an information session.
I move we adopt the minutes.
Motion by Councilman Binnell, a second by Vice Mayor Carter, to accept the proposed minutes. Any discussion about them? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The next item is the July 2019 financial statement.
I make a motion to accept the July financial statement as presented.
Motion was made for Vice Mayor Carter to accept the financial statement as presented, seconded by Councilman Leaf. Any other discussion?
I would like to comment that our new recorder, Keisha, she worked on this, and she did an excellent job.
Doing an excellent job, for sure. Thank you. Hearing no other comments, all in favor, accepting the July 2019 financial statement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. The next item that we have is the certified tax rate, which is, was actually passed by ordinance in first reading, May 16, 2019. We did not have a certified tax rate at that time, so the existing tax rate was used as a substitute. And we have that, and it does, my understanding, that if you accept the certified tax rate, you can do second reading of that ordinance tonight. Otherwise, we will have to reschedule. If you want to raise it, and anything other than what the certified rate is, we'll have to call a special call meeting, and it will have to be advertised for a minimum, I think it's 10 days.
It's just reasonable, seven to 10. The next meeting would certainly be plenty of time if you wanted to raise the tax rate.
That wouldn't be raising the tax rate above the $1.40 that it is now.
The $1.13.
The $1.13 of the certified.
If it's, if you go above the certified rate.
So we could accept the $1.13 tonight, and that'd be the second reading.
Yeah, it'd be finished with it. It's only if you want to increase it that you have to have a public hearing.
So we just, to make a motion, we have a public hearing, or if we want?
If it's what you want to do, we just, we'll have to just table it to the next meeting, or have to call a special call meeting, however you want to handle it.
Or you could, you could also go ahead and discuss it tonight, decide on a rate, and just consider this as first reading. Because it is really kind of quite a bit different from a $1.40 to a $1.13. That's what one of my other jurisdictions did, they just treated this as first reading, and then they'll have a public hearing before second reading. But if you want to accept the certified rate, just be done with it.
So to get to our discussion point, do we need somebody to make a motion? Or can we discuss it sitting here?
We're gonna need a motion, to be honest.
You want to pass over this to the end of the meeting, and us go ahead and take care of our business, come back to it?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, sir.
The next item is the dump truck. Let's see, Aaron's not made it. So we'll move on to resolution number R 082019-1, which is a resolution that is required for the state pilot program, which is the state and ECD and IDB are working on for Clayton Homes. And you have that resolution before you. And basically, what the attorney, Mr., I believe his name was Trent, asked for was that we needed verification of the terms that were ending for the board members. And that's a term ending December 31, 2019, is Leaf and Robertson. Term ending 12/31/2021 would be Hunt and Metters. And term ending 12/31/2033, 23, Reagan, Little, and Anderson.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution R 082019-1.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Leaf and a second by Councilman Binnell to accept the resolution. Open for discussion. John, I understand that you have had a chance to look at this, is that correct?
Which was, I did not get the agenda.
This is really a blanket resolution. It's, right now, it's for Clayton, but it could be for somebody else, if I understand it. Because Clayton's not mentioned anywhere. I think it's just, just put it in place for future pilots.
Are they forced off at the end of their term, or do they accept another term?
No, they can't accept another term. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for a roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Kirkman.
I don't vote on.
Sorry. Leaf.
Yes.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Binnell.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item is the job description for the codes inspector. And once we get that passed, the motion will also include advertising that position.
I make a motion to accept the building codes inspector's job description has been reviewed several times.
I'll second.
By understanding, we are the lengthy discussion, that we would advertise this as a part-time codes inspector. Correct?
Yes.
It doesn't say that in the title. And I think we need to, we need to put out there what we're really asking for. And we talked about two days a week, three half-days, you know, that can kind of work out there on schedule with the chief. But I think that needs to be in the advertisement that's going to go out.
We're gonna make two motions here, right? Make a motion for this, make a motion to advertise.
Let's see. So you're thinking just adopt this?
Then.
And then advertise a part-time? Is that what you're saying?
They will make another motion to advertise part-time.
Okay, we have advertise for full-time and part-time public work, so it's just however you want to advertise. If you want to do it as a separate motion, it's okay. I'm just going to include them both in the morning.
Yeah, let's make the motions.
I think on the, one of the revisions, we had added part-time building codes inspector that I thought.
I thought that was on the, on the latest version.
But this may not be.
This is the one you sent us after our last, was it work study?
It says 7/6/19.
I need to, I need to go back and look and see.
See what you got there.
Well, this would, this would apply to a part-time or a full-time person.
I think you're right, yeah.
But the advertisement is the big thing.
Here's the revised one. It does say on the last one, and it might have got mixed up, but there was several revisions out there. But the one, the latest one did mention it was a part-time building codes inspector. Because that's what we had agreed to in the work study, that we all thought that that's where we're going, but.
Did we miss anything else you can see wrong?
Well, I'm gonna have to.
Is that the wrong one? The one she's got does say part-time on it.
Yours says part-time?
The one I printed wrong.
You printed it off? Okay, and that's the, that's the latest one.
You got the right one, then.
That's the latest one.
Mine has the other.
Okay, I'll just, this is.
And the only thing I know that we did as an addition is the last meeting was where we put in about the work with Rick.
That's right.
We put, the master grant applied to not exceed 29 hours.
That, that's correct. That was also.
Correct.
That was the addition that was on there.
Freddie probably could have adjusted or amended motion and.
My motion would be for the latest revision that we had. I just happen to have the other one like he does. And she has got the latest.
Okay, I will, I will second that, as long as we're talking about the latest revision.
Yes, I am talking about the latest revision. And we do have a copy of it here to verify the points that you all have been speaking of. Is it in there about working with Rick, the state planner? Maybe not a name, but with the state.
Yes, established a word relationship with the planning department, state planner.
Ms. Keisha, if you would, if you could get any new revisions for everybody to at least get in their next package or send it out.
Does it have to have a date on the bottom back page? It's a good idea when you're going through revisions to continually.
It still says 7/6/19.
So we need to update that, yeah.
Keisha, you sent your email to us. What is it? I can just put it on, I can send it to you right now, I believe.
Yeah, it's keisha.trow at westmorelandtn.gov.
Keisha dot trout. Is it two Ts or one T?
Yes.
Two Ts.
Keisha dot trout at what? I'm sorry.
Westmorelandtn.
Oh, yeah.
Dot com.
That's the web address I want.
Short name like Rome or a picture.
Picture. I'll send that to you, we'll see if it gets there.
Okay. If there is no other discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Wolferson.
Yes.
Binnell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. So we'll go ahead and add in the line about advertising for the part-time code position.
I'll make a motion, we advertise for part-time's code position. What's more?
We need to give at least, well, I'll second that motion, second. We probably gonna need a month window on this.
Thirty days.
Yeah.
Is this codes, or are you talking about building inspector now?
Codes, building inspector.
Same thing.
Because.
Building code inspector, not codes.
Okay, so.
Bid's being by 12th, 19th, or 6th, when? Would you like? 15th, 16th, that's on Monday.
Building codes inspector.
Building, I think that's how we'd say it.
I think they probably is going that indeed dot whatever it is com, and the Westmoreland paper. Does it need to go anywhere else? Bigger audience than that. I've heard of three interested, fairly local, but that led me back out.
So you want to do indeed? Local paper?
Yes, sir.
Can you advertise on the Facebook and the website? If we have, how we come along?
I guess the police department can put it on theirs.
They could.
Yeah, I said it could.
Did we put a date on that?
It says September 12.
No, it's put to 15th, or 16th.
Just keep information about 16th.
Pick up the package from recorder's office, job description. Okay. Part-time code position, building and codes inspector, deadline of September 16th, pick it up from recorder's office, or apply it to the recorder's office by that time, is that correct? September 16th, noon, 4 o'clock? Okay. Going indeed, local paper, police department Facebook page, and our website. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is resolution R 082019-2, to discuss our urban growth boundary. The planning commission met and voted to keep the 2020, it's a 20-year plan, I guess, but the planning commission voted to make the recommendation to the council that we retain the current growth plan. And if I receive a motion on this resolution in a second, Rick Gregory is here from the State Planning Office to. And if I receive a motion on this resolution in a second, Rick Gregory is here from the state planning office to, to discuss that. It's the recommendation of Councilman Brown, who is the council representative on the planning commission.
I move that we pass resolution R-082019-2.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilkson and second by Councilman Bandle to accept the resolution. Rick, would you like to come up and address the council, please? We appreciate you taking time out from your busy night to come and be, come and be with us.
Glad to be here. Y'all have already seen this, I'm sure. Copy of the current boundary. It's not very big, it's not easy to read, but it says it was prepared June twentieth or twenty-second of two thousand and eleven. This, this has been the, the growth boundary for the city for some time. And the county and some of the cities are in the process of deciding how they want to go about revising their boundaries. And we met with the planning commission a few nights, a few weeks ago and talked about it. And the area that is covered by the current growth boundary seemed to be adequate in size and area to take care of future expected growth and expansion for Westmoreland. And as I explained to the planning commission, and the mayor and I have talked about it, Westmoreland has a municipal planning commission. So you don't see anything, you don't review anything outside your city limits as a municipal planning commission. You don't see resigning requests, you don't see subdivisions, site plans, anything. If it's not within your city boundary, your planning commission doesn't review it, doesn't see it. And for the most part, since the state legislature changed the statutes a couple of years ago for annexation for cities, only requested annexations come to cities anymore unless you have a request for a referendum. So the, the main purpose of the growth boundary today, it wasn't that way when it was originally adopted. But the main purpose of the growth boundary today is to reserve an area for Westmoreland's expansion through requested annexation. We can no longer go out and initiate an annexation by ordinance. So it just reserves that area. And, and for the most part, the area to the north of this growth boundary is a part of the county's rural area. And for the most part, part of the county south and west of this urban growth boundary is planned growth area for the county. There's no other city that is proposing to grow into Westmoreland's growth boundary. And we talked about Portland's water lines and how they've expanded through the years and things like that. But as far as actually becoming a part of another city, there's no, there's no chance of that happening as long as you have an earth growth, urban growth boundary. That's, that's what it was originally established for, was to protect that area for the city, for future expansion. And the planning commission looked at it and, you know, if, if you look at the southern end of it, it sort of runs along the ridge line. So dropping south didn't really accomplish anything. Moving north toward Kentucky doesn't really accomplish anything because of the lack of existing utilities. And to the west, pretty much the same thing, there's, there's not a real push for utility expansion to the west in, in anyone's opinion that, that was expressed at the meeting. So I'm, I mean, that's a, that's a fifty cent explanation, I'm happy to answer questions. But there, there wasn't express need to change the growth boundary from what it is today.
You remember when the last time this was reviewed?
There was a.
I mean, when these boundaries came out, was that two thousand and ten or?
This was printed about, I think, June two thousand and eleven. And it was part of the original adoption back in ninety-nine, two thousand, something like that. And, and it, it didn't change the growth boundary, that's just when this map was prepared. So this is a part of that original growth area, growth, growth plan that the county adopted back nineteen, twenty years ago.
That's basically been in place since then.
It has, it has. Other cities have large areas, they're talking about changing, retracting, some are talking about swapping out. Other, I think Westmoreland has a, has a good sized area. And, you know, to, to leave it as it is, you don't really have to get into the analysis that is said to be needed by the state law to make changes to the growth plan.
And the resolution is basically just to notify the county that they have called a, a meeting in early September of the coordinating committee, is that correct? What's the correct term?
It is, it is called the county growth coordinating committee.
Okay, and, uh, which, uh, as the mayor of Westmoreland, I'll be a member of that committee. But if, uh, you know, this, this is your decision tonight.
No questions, the planning committee looked at it and recommended it, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, appreciate you coming to Westmoreland tonight. Ms. Keesha, if you will call or roll call vote in this place.
Brown?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Will Chrisine?
Yes.
Bandle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the job description for the public works position.
So do we have a job description already for that? This is a part-time here that I'm looking at, is there one already adopted somewhere?
We have reviewed a draft of the public works description. Because we've had a copy brought before us.
We talked about it at work study. Last time.
Yeah, that's the whole time.
Yeah.
So you got a part-time and a full-time?
In my job description.
Okay.
Do we need to put a motion on the table first? I'll make that motion that we look at the job description for public works position, both, excuse me.
Just do one detail, I guess.
Yeah, let's just do, we're still doing the public works, right?
Right.
Okay, make a motion that we post the job description for public works position.
No.
No, no, we're just looking at the job description.
Looking at the job description, okay.
Right, we're going to prove it.
You did want to adopt it tonight, the job description.
I guess.
I'll second that motion, so. Now, we talked about it at work study last time.
I think Chris and when Jackie was here, I think both of them has looked over this. And I'm not sharing about Aaron, if he has, since he's been at the position.
You looked at the part-time and last time, didn't you?
The part-time, yes.
Okay. But this was brought before saying, we have reviewed this.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the one that we reviewed, or we're talking about at the work study was the part-time.
Right.
You made some changes on it.
Yeah.
So we, we want to adopt the, the full-time public works position job description. Is that one we have now?
Yes, sir.
We got to get out of this motion first here that we're already in, then we'll make another motion, is that right?
Okay, but, but the first one that I have is for the, just the public works position. So I'm going, you, you want to do the part-time first or full-time?
We're working on the full-time, I think, is what I'm talking about.
That's what I was thinking, full-time.
The motion made was just to, just to review it tonight. So we, we've reviewed it, we discussed about reviewing it, so let's get out of that motion. And then we'll make another motion to adopt it. Ain't that right, Mr. Breder?
That works.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yes.
Okay, you make the motion.
You'll make the.
Am I, am I, okay, yes, I'll make a motion that we adopt the job description for the public works position.
I'll second it. What?
Okay, now you can.
What's the matter? Who did the second?
Tony did second.
He got down on the, never mind.
We're still on the, on the full-time, it's my understanding.
The motion was to adopt the full-time public works job description.
Right.
That's correct.
As we, as presented here, we got it.
And that we've reviewed previously.
Okay, motion was, was by Councilman Brown and second by Councilman Bandle. Discussion.
We're working very hard for these positions.
Making it way too complicated.
I think so.
Okay, here ain't no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adopt is unanimous. Okay, now we move to the part-time public works position. Job description.
I make a motion to pass the part-time public works job description as presented.
I second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carter, second by Councilwoman Wilkson to accept the job description and adopt it for the part-time public works position. Discussion.
Which is basically ride the trash truck starting off. The public works supervisor can assign other things, but that's the main task for the part-time.
And that is in the job description?
Yes, sir, it's in the first paragraph, the first sentence.
Okay.
And I think when we get these passed, I think all the positions in, within the city.
Have job descriptions.
Has job descriptions.
Time to start reviewing. It'll be year in November, I think. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to advertise for the part-time public works position.
You got any comments on that, Aaron?
For the part-time, is, is it just part-time?
It says full-time and part-time here.
You want to separate those two, or you want to?
We can do them together, I believe.
No one's going to motion on the table.
First up, gets a lucky number?
Lucky number.
Well, I think they're standalone things myself. I move the advertise for the full-time public works.
If they want to combine them.
Who does?
I made the motion, though, I'm first.
Second.
I'm running out of room on the paper. Tony made the motion and Councilman Lee seconded for a full-time public works position to advertise for that. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The next item is to advertise for a part-time public works position.
I make the motion that we advertise for a part-time public works position.
I second.
Aaron, I thought you might have some comments.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilwoman Wilkson to advertise for the part-time public works position.
Normally we hear from the supervisor, do you have any input on this, Aaron?
At this time, I would, I, I, I actually was wanting to speak before we voted on any of it. But I, I was looking to only possibly hire a part-time at this time, if anything. But now that we've already voted on it, yes, I would like to hire a part-time employee. But as, right now, things are going fairly good. And I, I mean, we'll just see what applications we get, I guess would be the best way to do it. I mean, it's already voted on, we'll, we'll go ahead and advertise for it. And we've got a few applications already that, and we hadn't even advertised, which is.
There was.
One more work study.
There was advertisement in the paper for two, two weeks.
Right.
On part-time position.
Well, I've gotten several for full-time too, but I think they have, people had heard about it from the work study and things like that. So that's the only thing I can think of when we were advertising, it seemed like I only had just one come in. And then I had a couple more trickle in over the past couple of weeks. But right now, I've got, seems to be a good part-time worker. And hopefully he sticks it out. I'll, we'll just see what we get as far as applications. And I mean, I guess we can discuss it more.
So what you're saying is you don't need any full-time at this moment?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I feel like right now, we could use another guy. And, and the reason why is because Jacob, when originally in the last work study, Jacob had put in his two weeks notice. And he changed his mind, changed, decided to stay a week after that. But I had already told the council and everybody about that at the work study. And the next week after the work study, he decided to stay and not take the other job. So that left me with the same amount of full-time that I had.
No, we still haven't filled Aaron's position. Or actually, it was Jackie's position, I guess.
So that's, that's the full-time, that's the full-time.
So you do have a full-time position that's open, but.
Right.
He's not wanting to fill it at this time, yes.
I mean, at this time, I, I believe I would be better off to see about maybe get another part-time person and see how the one I have right now is my recommendation.
Well, we didn't set any timeframe on when we're going to advertise it, so.
Well, I don't know why we're advertising again, because we just got through paying the bill for the newspaper, advertising for two weeks on part-time position.
Well, I understand that. But we don't have to advertise for the full-time right now, we can delay that. Because he, he says he doesn't need anybody full-time.
I know, that what I'm speaking of, the motion is on the floor for part-time. And we've already advertised for part-time.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion we've already passed, Mr. Bradish, can we go back and undo that? And he's typically going to need a full-time.
Sure you can, you make a motion to reconsider and vacate that motion.
Or you can just vote motion down.
Well, we have a motion, we have a part-time, we have a part-time motion on the table right now.
Make a motion to reconsider that earlier motion.
Uh, make a motion to reconsider.
Well, it's, it's, it's voted, it's here off, or hired or voted.
What are we voting?
This is to advertise for part-time.
Well, now we've already advertised, apparently.
I know, yes, but the motion's on the floor.
The motion's.
And the motion's been seconded, so we can either vote for it or we can vote against it. if we don't want to do it.
Did we receive applications? Do we have applications to review for another part-time position?
I'm not sure about part-time. I do have some that I know for full-time, as far as the part-time.
So do we need to advertise again?
No, he's done got one in place on a trial basis, is that right?
Yes.
He's got one on a trial basis that I put on temporary for 30 days, but replaced the one, but determined it.
Right. I mean, if we do, yes, I would like to advertise for a part-time, but if we're going to advertise for the part-time, I would like to maybe do it on the job website that you were talking about earlier.
Indeed.
Lost my train of thought.
Indeed.
Indeed. And, you know, maybe just a little bit bigger, broader, specific.
Oh, yes. So you want more in your poo, is what you're saying, for part-time? That's the reason you'd like to advertise it again?
Yes.
Because what you've got sounds like full-time.
Yeah, that's why I'm not sure that the applications that I have are for part-time. I'll have to go through them, because some of them I just got in today, and it's been a pretty busy week. But I haven't reviewed all of them.
Okay.
All right. I think I know what's happening.
Will you state that motion?
Okay, the motion is to advertise for a part-time public works position, and you just wanted to advertise on indeed, not in the, in the paper and like that?
I mean, if we can do both, that's fine, but whatever's, you know, in the budget, I don't know how much the indeed costs or whatever.
We need to do it both, really.
Okay, your motion, Doug, what do you think?
Both.
Okay. So we have a motion and the second to advertise.
How many weeks are we advertising?
If that's the case, I'll just go one week. It's a recommendation, but it's open for discussion.
Don't matter, maybe one way's good.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Other discussion?
How quick can you get it on indeed? Is that something you could do tomorrow, and it'll show up the next day? I don't know how that works, you don't have to, you have a waiting period or? I think two would be better, two weeks.
Set applications until the 15th, is that what was said on that other one?
Yeah, we didn't mention the 16th on the other one.
16th.
That'd be a month on this one.
Could advertise one week in the paper or two weeks on this indeed, or do that? I don't know.
Just handle it, my area, take care of it.
That's just.
One week in the paper? Two weeks in indeed?
It'd be turned in by?
16th.
September 16th?
Closing date, September 16th.
That's okay with Doug and your motion.
Sounds great.
Okay. Okay, let me stand there.
Yes.
Um, okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
They will make a motion to reconsider advertising for a full-time public works position.
I'll second it.
That was reconsidered, not advertised.
Rescind or reconsider, what's the right word?
Rescind.
You can rescind your earlier action, you can reconsider it, either way you want to. Don't get too bonded with the words.
It's a different word than how we vote here.
Vote reconsider and rescind. Reconsider and rescind.
Not to advertise.
I think that this. Make sure I vote when I vote. Which way do I vote?
Who's going to talk the minutes for this meeting next month?
Keisha, she's getting a real word out.
She's ready for a raise?
Wow.
Okay. The motion is to reconsider and rescind the motion to advertise the full-time position? Is this permanent or just tabled for a month, or?
Permit for them.
Just somebody brings it back up.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to rescind is unanimous. Okay, moving right along. First reading on ordinance, to amend ordinance 012-012019-1, which is the policies and procedures manual.
You say, I said, it's a citation, but you might want to see it.
A man.
Sorry.
So I move amend ordinance number 012019-1 regarding background checks and trip responsi, yeah, trip.
Trip reimbursement.
Trip reimbursement, yes. And I gave my copy of it.
Are we doing this, too?
No, that's, that's all part of.
That's something else.
What's that it?
I'm just reading.
This is all part of the same, it's all the same.
Okay, I just thought.
It just ran out of line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's one big thing.
So the motion on the table is what now?
To amend ordinance number 012019-1 for policy and procedures of background check, trip reimbursement, and part-time employee hours.
Okay, got you. Now, now I understand, thanks.
This is first reading, right?
First reading. Councilman Biddle has the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Open for discussion.
In this ordinance, it also has the A section of application that says applicants will be removed from consideration if, there's no language there, is that supposed to be included?
All that stays, even, that's not coming out.
It stays the same as the current policy procedure.
Right, it's just changing may to will.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
So there was not, in the policy procedures manual, there was no verbiage that explained the regular part-time employee? Is this addition, is this added into? Or was there another language that was used? Because this sounds like the exact same language, I thought that was in the last.
Probably, if I look it up, I'm going to guess it probably said 32 hours instead of 30 hours.
Okay, okay, yep. Well, that does go along, this does go along with our recent job descriptions that we're doing.
Right.
I do like that.
Slipped too many times, Doug.
These background checks, they will be them thorough background checks, I mean.
Right.
And checks on anybody we hire that goes to work.
Right.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, the policy actually says that if they're contingent upon an offer for a full-time, do you want it to include part-time also?
Thank you, if I would put on our payroll, at least have a background check.
And in reference to your 29 hours, Doug, on page nine, a policy procedure under regular part-time employee, it says their hours cannot exceed 30 hours per week, and what was it?
This is 29. Not exceed 29 hours.
30, you have to pay them.
Yeah. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. That makes sense, this, this makes more sense.
Okay. And I think the trip reimbursements are just things that we had to clarify. It said that the council would set the rate for reimbursements for food, well, we never did set that. So this, this just says a reasonable amount, and it clarifies who can be reimbursed for trips. It's very specific on that, and the mayor will sign all the, all the trip reimbursements, because he didn't, he didn't have that before.
Any other discussion before, y'all need more time to read?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you call for role plays.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Worxson? Yes. Carter?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion carries unanimously. We'll have a second reading of that ordinance at the next regular meeting. The next item, we will come back up, Aaron, and let you discuss the dump truck purchase next.
Got a quote, on a dump truck, on a new dump truck that we were talking about, just trying to see the price difference, and this is a brand-new Ford, and it's the same size as the one that we currently have, so it won't be any bigger. And it'll be, it'll fit all the needs that the one that we currently have does, so. The only thing is, this is on state bid, and he said that it has to be by the 26th, has to be ordered. And that's just, the front sheet is just a little bit of how, how much it, as far as the GVW, that's, that's how much the truck can actually hold, and it's the same as the one we have now. And it'll be under warranty, anything happens to it, you know, so. I think for the money difference, at the, the ones that I've been finding on GovDeals and things like that, you know, $29,000, $30,000 dump trucks, and they're not a whole lot better than the one we got, if not, they're in the same condition as the one we have. And that's, you know, that's up to y'all to decide, but I truly feel like if we do that, we are truly buying somebody else's hand-me-down that somebody's had problems with. And everybody that I've talked to, I've got a brother-in-law that, he has a trucking company, that's all he deals with is dump trucks, and you don't buy a dump truck and sell it if it's working good. You get every penny you can out of it, so when it starts giving a lot of trouble, when you spend a certain amount of money on it, that's when you replace it with a new one or sell it, so. But that's my, my two cents on it.
But your concern with the old truck is really a safety issue.
Oh, yeah, with this truck, we'll be able to haul the backhoes. If we have to go work on the main line out in Bethpage, instead of having to drive the backhoe all the way there, we can actually haul it with the old backhoe we have now. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put my pickup truck on a trailer behind it, much less that great big old backhoe. Because, and also, whoever drives the dump truck, you're supposed to do a pre-trip inspection every time you drive it, and by law, if something happens, and you're driving that dump truck, and something broke on it, or rusted completely in two, then I'm liable. If it runs over your truck and kills you, then I'm liable for you. So that's the biggest main concern with the dump truck that we have.
You can still use the old dump truck, you just don't want to pull.
Yeah, we can still use it, but if you hook a trailer to it, you know, that's, that, everything, except for the back part where all the salt had sit on it, is still a good truck. I mean, and it, it still suffice to haul salt and spread salt with, but we can't use it to haul the backhoe anymore, and if we get, you know, hauling a lot of heavy rock and stuff like that, and when we're ditching and things like that, we can't fill it completely up, like, you know, you wouldn't be able to. But, yeah, well, actually, when Adam and, Adam was still here, Jackie was in the dump truck, and they had filled it up with ditching dirt, and they took it over to the barn to dump the dirt out, and while the bed was up in the air, it broke and fell down. I'm sure y'all, some of y'all probably remember that, but the bed was in the air raised and fell completely down. You know, it could have, possibly could have killed Jackie, because he was in the truck. I mean, if that would have, the back hinge that it sits on would have broke too, and the bed fell forward, it could have crushed him, but, or if somebody would have been standing around. But luckily, he was in the truck, and Adam was on the backhoe, but, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's in bad condition.
Did y'all talk about delivery time on this truck?
He said, any, because it had to be built, anything would be, he said, give them up 220 days.
How old is it, dump truck, the current one?
I'm not sure, honestly. I want to say it's an '05, but it's not very old. But I want to say it's an '05.
Did the city buy it used?
No, they bought it new.
I'm going to make a motion here to, to purchase this 2009 F-750 dump truck from a state bid that Aaron has presented here to us.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee, seconded by Councilman Biddle, to purchase the dump truck that is listed before us on the state bid. We're open for discussion.
Of course, we've already got money, $30,000, that we is going to buy an old truck if we found one, so we've already got part of that.
You just have to amend the budget to cover it.
Yeah, I think, I think buying new here is a wide choice, instead of, because I remember years ago, we, every, every police car we purchased was brought out by the county, and I think buying something used, we're going backwards instead of forward, so. And with this deal here, and Aaron may explain a little different, we can run this truck for three years and not put very many miles on it, and then we can trade that truck in for $15,000 or $20,000, then we'll have another new truck with three years of warranty.
Yeah.
And of course, everybody knows when you have to fix something on these trucks, it's very expensive.
Yeah, the salesman that I spoke with, he did say that a lot of times, government entities, they'll take these trucks and buy them new, and trade them in three to five years when the warranty's out, and they won't have many miles, just like our truck, we've had it for however long we've had it, it's only got 17,000 miles on it. So, I mean, it wouldn't have but just a few thousand miles, he said, and that way, when it's only got that many miles on it, they can give us all, a whole lot back of what we purchased of it. And he said you can actually wind up getting a new truck every three to five years and only spending $10,000 to $20,000, depending on the condition and things like that, and you're always keeping a new truck. And that was the. Um, and that was another thing he said. Because what they'll do is they'll take these trucks that we buy on state bid, and they'll give us, you know, a trade-in value of them, and they'll sell them, you know, to somebody in the public that, you know, needs a truck. And they're still like new. So, that's, if that helps.
What's usually the warranty on these? Three years?
I wanted to say it was five. Uh, it, it depends on what it is. Uh, I, I didn't bring that paperwork with me, I didn't print all of it off. Uh, but it's, uh, I want to say that it's unlimited miles for three years. And then five years was, I wanted to, I want to say somewhere around a hundred and something thousand miles. But, um...
And we'll, we'll never get to the, the mileage you said, the warranty.
But I can get that, get those numbers to you. I just, uh, I've got them on my email.
So that price comes with a warranty?
Yes. Yes, it, it'll have a full factory warranty. And it's just like buying a, a truck, um, or a car or anything else. It'll have a bumper-to-bumper warranty for so long, and then it'll have a powertrain warranty for so long.
I was really surprised at the price of this vehicle. I thought it was gonna be a hundred fifty thousand for a new one, but...
I will say I priced a Mac, and it was ridiculous. Uh, it was twice as much for the same truck.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? And that bottom-line price is eighty thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars?
Yes, sir.
It's ta, there's, is there's no tax?
No tax. He did say that because it was over thirty-three thousand pounds that we might be in a federal excise tax, but he emailed me back today and said that it looked like we wouldn't have the federal excise tax. So we wouldn't have any tax on it, just that price.
Good. So with our thirty-three thousand six hundred, it's in the budget for a dump truck. That leaves cash money of forty-six eight fifty-two that we will have to come up with. Is that correct? Y'all follow?
Mm-hmm. A little discussion. All finished?
Do we need to have more discussion about the budget?
I was gonna say, where is that forty-six thousand coming from?
You still got your tax rate on it, if you recall.
What?
You still got the tax rate on the agenda of the law.
Yeah. And we certainly, we got that issue there. Extra hundred thousand dollars we got, you know, that they want to expect, and so it come from there, so.
Okay, so it's covered?
Yeah, I think it's covered.
You just have to amend the budget.
Right. I was wondering, I was wondering where we pulled it from, I mean, did you put it before that?
You weren't pulling it from the budget.
We'd be adding it, but we'd be moving it.
Yeah. You'd be adding it to the budget.
Okay, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call a role.
Will Kristin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion case unanimously. See what we need to do to get that ordered.
Yes, sir. I'll get in touch with him more.
Okay. The next item is the, uh, the three-quarter ton and the one-ton pickup.
I'll make this motion that we purchased the one-ton truck, two thousand and twenty-four F-350 crew cab, four-by-four diesel, off the state bid that Aaron has presented to us at forty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. That money's already been budgeted.
Correct. Actually, more than that.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion, and the second motion was by Councilman Leif, seconded by Councilman Biddle. We're open for discussion.
So we have quotes for two. You're saying this is the one, or are we doing both?
No, just the one.
Just the one.
Yeah, just give us an example there.
They were just, he was just showing us what the other would be.
And there's only, only two thousand dollars difference between the two fifty.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing quotes. We chose which one we were doing.
Yes.
The reason why that you had two quotes was because originally, uh, we was gonna go with three-quarter ton.
That's what we talked about originally.
Uh, and, and so I got a price, uh, just to see the difference in the three-quarter and one-ton, after speaking with some contractors and people that haul them quite a bit. Uh, and they recommended to go with the one-ton. For overtime, it would be a better, less warranty on the truck.
Okay.
We put fifty thousand in the budget for this vehicle. Under water.
Yes.
So it's there.
And also, when you get it outfitted, it'll be used.
It'll be usable, yeah.
A little discussion.
So the price difference is not much, that's what, like you mentioned.
Sorry. Sorry, but we've already passed the public comments. Ms. Keisha, if you'll call a role.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Will Kristin?
Yes.
Let the record reflect the motion case unanimously. Okay, uh, I've been going back to discuss the certified tax rate. I'm gonna ask for a motion to, uh, to, uh, suspend the rules for just a moment. Uh, I think the chief wants to address the council. Uh, he got here a little bit late to ask for a, uh, agenda change, so. If I could have that motion?
You got it?
Second?
Yep, sir.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I guess we're gonna go home, aren't we?
Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you. Uh, sorry about so, being so late. Uh, as y'all know, uh, we've taken a pretty, pretty good hit in activity. It is, it is pretty good. We have two officers that have been injured, uh, trying to take somebody into custody. Uh, I'm deeply shorthanded, uh, right now. Uh, I've got one on military leave, I got one that's, uh, cause, cause has resigned, and we're still trying to fill the position. And then I've got one that's on leave right now. And I would like to ask the council, please, uh, if I can ask for some part-time to kind of help. It is important, imperative, that we keep the shifts covered at all times for the city, the safety of the city. And, uh, we have been doing so, but we have been working a quite a number of hours. And I like to reduce some of those hours and relieve some stress. And with that being said, I'd like to call up the first, uh, part-time with CJ. This is, uh, CJ Simons. Uh, CJ Simons has been a, he was been a reserve officer for the department. Uh, he's been very dedicated to the department. He has put in over the reserve tra, uh, post, uh, post-approved reserve training. He's put in over a hundred and twenty hours of training, which requires him to be a reserve officer. He has also put in his forty-plus hours, and then over on the V Academy, he's put, added it up, he's had over two hundred hours of training. Um, so he, he knows, he's from this area, he's a volunteer firefighter in this area. Uh, I, I would like to ask the council to please hire him, uh, part-time so that we can, uh, pay him for his services, and he will help us out.
Mr. Bradley, would you have to, uh, amend the agenda again to do this?
Take a two-thirds vote, yes.
Well, okay. Mike, can you put it, could you put him on an emergency situation for temporary that we can vote on on the next meeting?
I was actually reading the, uh, the policy on that, and I think I'm, I'm, really, I think I'm limited to, uh, the department heads and officers, which should be, uh, um, the, you know, the attorney and the judge, and I like that.
We need to take a look at it, that's what it does say, and I think we need to take a look at it.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and add hiring Officer Simons as part-time police officer. As requested by Chief Wright.
I'll second.
But, uh, is this the only one we need, or do we...
I've got two more to go. You want to just do one together?
Yes.
Come on, there. The one that I have that's not here, he is actually working right now at a football game.
We need to amend the agenda here first, I guess.
Yeah, what's his name?
John David. This is John David.
I'll add John David to my motion.
And I'll still, which is your third one?
The other one is Chris Harden.
And Chris Harden to my motion.
And I'll still second that motion, by the addition of those names.
And all three leagues are recommended by Chief Wright?
Yes, yes, sir.
And of course, he's full-time. Any other guys full-time?
Uh, this'll be part-time, uh, he'll be part-time.
But I mean, he works, he's already a certified officer.
He is a, he is a constable, he is, uh, going, he's also got two hundred-plus hours, so he would be qualified by post to work twenty, uh, he could work his twenty hours.
Buy themselves a car, that's what it's getting at. Okay, I'm with you.
He is gonna be going to the academy next month.
Well, CJ and the other Harden guy, can they drive by themselves?
Well, let's get a second on the, on the motion to amend the agenda.
You got one.
We gotta vote on it then. We're amending the agenda now.
Okay, we're, we're, okay. This is to adjourn via amendments to, uh, hire part-time officers, CJ Simons, John David, and Chris Harden, at the recommendation of Chief Alpha Montano. So, um, uh, officer, uh, officer. Councilman Leif made the motion, and it was seconded by Councilman Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is amended.
I will make a motion to hire these three guys we just named as part-time police officers, as recommended by Chief Wright.
And I will second that.
Deputy Harden is a certified, uh, deputy sheriff, that's certified officer. He is the SRO at the middle school. And the reason why he can't be here today is because he's actually working a ballgame.
He is certified?
He's certified, yes.
And he's...
So...
But CJ will be able to drive by himself?
Yes, he'll be able to drive by himself. Uh, uh, he will be able to drive by himself. They all have been training. Want to give him just a little quick F, more FTO, just a little, just to make sure they're up to date with the policies and procedures and everything. Uh, Deputy Harden, he can work as many hours because he is certified and works full-time with another department. As many hours as he wants that we can hire. They can only work no more than twenty hours a week.
That will help you tremendously, don't worry.
Keep us in mind after you get out of the academy, okay?
They'll be fine at forty-seven years old.
And for y'all that don't know, uh, uh, Mr. David is the one that outfitted all of our patrol units. He does a lot of work for us, uh, on, on the side. And will do ten or fifteen thousand dollars worth of work, uh, for a thousand fifteen hundred dollars. So, uh, we're deeply indebted to you for, for what you've done for this department already.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Not to mention other activities that he has. Uh, do you need anything else for your paperwork of, if they need to do before we vote? Okay. All in favor of the motion to hires, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You say.
Thank you for your motion to allow us to take care of that before we go into the, uh, the certified tax rate. So now we'll move, uh, move back to that one, and we will pursue it, um... Ever, you want to address it?
Aye.
If you want to start with a new first reading of an ordinance, or if you want to, uh...
Okay.
Go ahead.
The way I understand, if we leave it at one thirteen, or one, whatever, one thirteen is their recommendation, we've already done the first reading?
Correct.
Okay.
I maybe we keep the same tax rate, three dollar forty. Get the discussion started.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Biddle, and a second by Councilwoman Carter, to, uh, do a second reading with a set rate of one dollar and forty cents.
Is that what we, like, this year we're using, is that what our current one was?
Yes, we've been using a dollar.
It cannot be a second reading, though, because that's a tax increase. It has to be a first reading.
And we'll have to go to a public hearing.
Yes, have to do a public hearing. In other words, they can't vote on that tonight as a second reading. It has to be a first reading.
First reading tonight, then we'll have to have a new.
So if one, it may just goes away.
How much is a penny in the tax rate, Mayor? I think that'd be helpful to all the council.
What? Five thousand, maybe?
What'd you say?
How much is a penny? Mr. Iswell should've given everybody that information. How much, one penny on the tax rate, maybe?
I think it's here.
Is that the aspect ratio? This is what he sent to us. Under the old rate, one penny, I think, was about fifteen thousand.
Well, that, it'll be more than that now, then, because you've got this adjusted rate. Probably something there, I, it seemed like it maybe was eighteen thousand or twenty thousand. He keep listed all those to use United at a meeting, I would say.
Okay.
So has some of your other cities been leaving their tax rate as...
Portland left theirs, and Hennepin'sville's raising theirs.
Why is it?
Portland adopted just the certified tax rate.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. There was no tax increase. Hennepinville's gonna have to have a public hearing in two weeks on their tax rate to have it increased.
And the general assumption, I'm understanding, in the county, if you kept the same rate, it would be about a thirty, thirty-five percent increase. That's the general consensus, right?
Now, you can do the math, and less more, though, it's much simpler than that. You're talking about raising the rate from one thirteen to one forty. So it's twenty-seven over one thirteen, wherever that fraction is, that's the tax increase. You're talking about increasing to twenty-seven cents. Got that there, Mr. Biddle, twenty-seven over one thirty? Over one, one forty, wasn't it?
Yes.
Over one forty, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven over one... No, twenty-seven over one thirteen.
That's nineteen, does sound right.
Twenty-seven over one thirteen.
Yeah, twenty-seven over one thirteen, twenty-seven cents divided by one, one thirteen certified tax rate. At twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four percent.
Well, my particular case, I did it on my house, for example. Look at the old, you know, the old tax rate and the new one. Uh, mine would be like a twenty-three percent increase.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but the money that the city would take from me would be less money, uh, at the dollar thirteen. And certainly with the way we rake and scrape and buy things to improve the city's, uh, operation, we, uh, we'd have a hard time at dollar thirteen, I think.
Well, we're not raising it if it goes, uh, we're not raising it from the current last year at a dollar forty.
Well, you are, because the assessment changed. The assessments went up.
Right, but...
We're not changing.
You're not raising the rate, but you're raising the effective rate.
Right, effective, yes.
Right, the act, the, when the certified rate works, a dollar thirteen is to generate the same amount of revenue you had last year at a dollar forty. So anything you do above a dollar thirteen is a tax increase. But the tax rate doesn't have to increase. If you keep the same rate, the rate doesn't increase, but your tax revenues increase.
Your revenue will increase. And our last reappraisal was five years ago, and we had, I think, a, a certified rate of one point three-two at that time, and we kept the dollar forty then. And we didn't see that much increase in our revenues. The time the ones that was delinquent, that... The time the ones that was delinquent didn't pay, we were still under budget.
When's the last time we had a property tax increase? Anybody know?
Well, with the reappraisal, when you raised it, it effectively...
Five years ago.
Five years ago, I didn't sense the word, okay.
A rate, revenue increased, like you said, but the, the actual rate didn't. It's been $1.40 since before Ricky or during Ricky.
During Ricky. And effectively, your new rate right now is 113, $1.13. So what you're looking at is the $1.40 you had is now the $1.13.
Right.
It's 23% increase, I'm gonna second what you said.
And when you look at it on a monthly, in my case, that's $8 a month. If we go with the $1.40, that's the new assessment.
Obviously, I don't like tax, property tax increases, I don't like that. And, but I don't like our police officers at the pay that they're at also, or our city workers at the pay that they're, that they're at. But I think a do, I think this $1.40, from $1.13 to $1.40, or the 20% something raise, I think that's excessive. Uh, in my opinion, I think maybe, uh, $1.25 or somewhere in that neighborhood. I'd like to see what a penny does generate, I'd like to get that information in my hand before the second reading.
I was gonna suggest the mayor can get that information to you before second reading.
Yeah.
It's just a mathematical calculation, it's pretty simple to do, but Mr. Isbell's office will provide that to you.
Yeah, I would like to see that, too.
So we need to pass this in order to move on?
Right.
And then amend it later, if we need to.
That's right.
So you want to sign us a new ordinance number for first reading?
Well, our, uh, plus procedure ordinance was '08, is it?
2019.
So it'd be, it'd be dash two, same.
Excuse me.
08, 2019, dash two.
I'm not saying $1.40 is the right number, but we had to get something in front of the board so we could start talking.
Right.
Well, it's a number that you won't go higher than that, too, which is good for the public to have notice of what's going on. It's sort of the upper range.
You know, I, I want to say one thing, the previous councils have done an excellent job. I mean, to, to do no more increases than they've had and to keep the city going, uh, they've done a good job. And we want to, like David mentioned, you can, you can go, piggyback from the employees, streets, parks, you know, it's just, we're, we're just running down because we don't have funds to do it.
Okay, when do you want to schedule for second reading for this?
I think with her or him, Mr. Bradley.
As long as you have it done in September, I think you'll be all right. But it really needs to be passed then, because the tax bills have to go out.
September, September?
Yeah, I know, I'm, I don't know who, I don't know who printed your tax bills, but you might check with that, and if, if the third meeting in September is not early enough, the mayor can call a special meeting.
Why don't we have a special call meeting and a work study right before? Would that work?
Is it the 5th of September?
Yes, September.
That's the first Thursday in September.
And that gives you time to go ahead and advertise, try to get your ad out tomorrow, a notice of a proposed tax increase.
I see, it will, it will go into next Thursday.
Well, it can be posted.
As long as it's within 10 days, though.
You can post it.
You can post it around town.
Yeah, put it on the city's website.
Another discussion? Hearing none, if you'll call, roll, please, Ms. Keisha.
Brown?
Yes.
Biddle?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Will, Kristen?
Yes.
Carter? Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. I think that is everything on the agenda, unless I'll say something that I've missed.
That's all.
And I hear a motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned.